All to order, the town of Andover Board of Selectmen regular meeting for Tuesday, November 12th. We're getting started promptly at seven o'clock tonight. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right. Our next item is public speak, and we're going to move on. The first person that we're going to let speak is Dave Castanian. Actually, Dave. No, I want to let you speak. Please don't speak about the candidacy.
Okay.
All right.
Nothing for me then, Jeff.
All right. Beata, same issue. Okay, you're good. All right, we'll go to Alicia Lee. Anything for public speak, Alicia? I think she's having problems connecting. We'll come back to her. Linda Fish.
All set.
All right, Liz Lokech. Okay, she's not. Shannon Lawden.
Hi Jeff, thanks. I'm just here to express my support for Alicia Lee for the vacancy on the board. Demographically, I believe that the vacancy should be filled by a woman. And Alicia is the candidate that, as far as I know, was selected by the Republican Town Committee for its endorsement. The position, as far as I know, cannot be filled by a Democrat. And all three candidates on tonight's agenda are registered Republicans. If you don't choose Alicia tonight, it will be the second time that you will have rejected the Republican Town Committee's endorsed candidate. And I don't think that's the best way to go about it. Thanks.
Scott Soye.
Hi, I want to basically reiterate what Shannon said. One thing really in favor of Alicia is she's actually done the job. And she's, everything I've heard was she was great at it. So I'd love to see her take the role. That's it.
Thank you. Kate McIntosh. Greenhouse.
Hi, I'm here for a couple of reasons tonight. One, just to express that I would really like us to have a tri-board meeting. I know you guys have it on your agenda for tonight. Would love if we could, you know, decide on a date for that in the near future. And then additionally, just to express my support for Beata. I know she's been in our town for a few years. We are often eye to eye and often on opposing sides of political things. But she's a great person. She would bring a woman's perspective to the board and also a mother of young children, which is something that you guys don't currently have. So just here to support her. Thank you.
Liz Lokech has your hand up if you can speak now.
Yeah, I couldn't shut off my audio. I just want to say hello. And if I could, for the record, could I just tell the correct spelling of my name? I just went and read back through a few months' worth of meeting minutes and it's all spelled wrong. So if I could just correct that for the record.
Sure.
It's L O K I E C. I mean, I don't expect history to be fixed, but just for going forward. Thank you.
Kathy Mike Plazey.
Good evening. I just have one thing. As Secretary of the Andover Republican Town Committee, I forwarded a letter of endorsement from the ARTC to endorse Alicia Lee as the committee's choice for the Board of Selectmen's position to replace Republicans' selectmen Paula King. Thank you.
Okay. Celeste Willard.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, everyone. I'm just here to offer my support along with my husband, Steve. Our support for Beata for the vacancy for the Board of Selectmen. I've worked with Beata in a number of different things in town. And she's for this town. I think she would be a great addition to the board. She's definitely proven that she is involved and wants to see this town move forward. And I'm just here to offer my support.
Okay, Bill Penn. All right, Bill, we'll come back to you. Stephen King.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here to support the ARTC nominated choice for Board of Selectmen, Alicia Lee. I'd also like to remind everybody that I would like to see these meetings in person. And also with an option for an online option for those who can't attend. And I just want to say thank you, everybody, for the support of the recent election. Even though I barely did any campaigning, I think we did real well, and I'll see you again in two years.
Kimberly Person.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Joseph Godwin.
All set. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, Alicia Lee. See if it's working out.
All set. Thank you.
Okay, Joanne Ebert. Okay, Linda Armstrong.
Hard time getting.
There you go. We'll go back to Ebert. Yeah, we could hear you.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to say that it really shows a lot of class with Stephen. I mean, I'm here to listen to everything tonight, didn't plan on talking much. But I think it shows a really lot of class that Stephen King has continued to be really involved in all of the meetings and showing himself and coming to support people and being involved in the town. I love to see people like that, and that shows a lot of class by him. Thank you. It shows he really is interested.
Linda Armstrong. Okay, sorry. LeAnn Hutchinson.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, and then I'm assuming two, three, four, five is Attorney O'Brien. If not, you're free to public speak. Okay, did I miss anyone?
Hi, Jeff. It's Jerry Kremay calling.
Oh, hi, Jerry.
How you doing?
Good.
I just want to thank you and the people that I want to especially thank are the people who have run through this vacancy on the Board of Selectmen. It shows you that really good people in this town, people who are willing to donate their time and work hard and do what it takes to make this town a better place. I was a little disappointed that here it is, the second round, and we're still faced with a vacancy. I think that in a case like this, since that seat has to be a Republican seat and a Republican has to be in it, I think it only makes sense to me that you go with the Republican Town Committee's endorsed candidate. I mean, I'm looking at it from both sides as a Republican or a Democrat. It's embarrassing to go out in public and still have this difficulty. I believe the four select people should have a conversation, a discussion, and make a choice. And that's all I have to say. I know it's not an easy choice. It's a very difficult choice because you have such good people that are running for it and vying for it. So do your best and see if you can produce a winning candidate. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else that I missed? Megan Lally, I don't think I got you.
Jeff, we're trying to get Carol Lee to be able to speak for the Recreation Commission.
Okay.
Can she speak under my account?
I think we just let her in, so.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, Megan, Carol, unmute yourself and you should be able to speak.
Okay, I am unmuting now.
There you go.
Okay. Let me see. Make sure my volume is up. I do apologize. It's taken me a while dialing here. I just want to speak on the town proposed credit card use policy. Currently, the Recreation Commission votes as a whole on how we're spending our budget that is given to us by the Board of Finings. Right now, with this proposed credit card use policy, we would be, we are the only appointed board that would be under jurisdiction of a town employee. So the designated supervises area responsibility. We were told initially that we are an advisory board to the community senior center director. And now it appears that we are under per jurisdiction as far as the budget. And again, we're the only appointed board that is on this list. I have the entire Recreation Commission here with me tonight. They can all speak through my computer here, just to let you know they are all proposed. We have the five members and two alten. In the past, we have voted at our meetings how to spend our funds. We vote as a commission. And then those minutes are given to the treasurer along with a signed-off credit card use form. So it's not just one person making the decision. As a commission, we are making those decisions, how to spend the fund. Anyone else like to? Here.
Hi, this is Anne Marie Daigle. I'm vice chair of the Rec Commission, and I agree with the statements that Carol made. And also just not sure why we have a separate budget than the Community Senior Center. Why wouldn't we be asking for permission from that organization?
Anyone else?
Linda.
Hi, this is Robert Post. I feel the same way as Carol does, the rest of the committee, your own budget. That's how I'm going to vote.
Okay. All right, I understand. We'll sit there and address that when we get to the credit card item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, did I miss anyone else? Okay, so let's move on to item three additions and changes to the agenda. Anybody? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we push item seven, appointment of a new Board of Selectmen candidate to our December meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, do we have any other changes or we'd like to talk about this one right now? Okay, for discussion purposes, we had an email thread going that started on October 23rd by Carol Lee. She brought to our attention that there was vacancies with instructions on how to submit letters. It was not posted. Jeff Murray responded on that on the 23rd where he said, I would suggest keeping it open for the month of November and only accept letters of interest during that time. That was followed up by a response from me. I said, if we do this, we will not appoint our fifth member till December. Are all Board of Selectmen members okay with this? Carol, please provide a list of potential candidates, so on and so forth. Followed up by a response back from Jeff Murray on Tuesday, October 29th. My suggestion is to review all new candidates from here on forward. Stephen King and Joseph Godwin should not be considered. Should not be considered. They both applied, went to a vote, and were not selected. I am fine with December. It gives new people a chance to apply and to be considered. That was followed up with Ann Kremay on the 29th of October saying, I agree with Jeff that we should only accept new applicants. A deadline of November 30th will give a full month for applications and then vote in December. We could have a special meeting at the start of December if we want. That was followed up by an email from Scott. It was my understanding at the last Board of Selectmen meeting that we should, this is also on October 29th. It was my understanding at the last Board of Selectmen meeting that we would be selecting candidates our November meeting. I got letters of intent from Dave Castanian, BA to Gdamski. I understand that there are three other interested parties, but I have not received any other letters of intent as of today. We're now, please, planning on the November date to choose the final candidates. Jeff Murray responded, why rush? Let's take every opportunity to make everyone, anyone interested can apply, all on October 29th. So after that, we sat there and Carol Lee put in a letter that is in the River East. It's on page four of our packet that states that Board of Selectmen vacancy, any Andover elector who is not a Democrat and is interested in serving on the Board of Selectmen for a term ending November 16th, 2027, should send a letter of interest to the town of Andover care of Board of Selectmen vacancy, 17 School Street, Andover, Connecticut, or email a letter to the town clerk at AndoverCT.org. Note, due to the minority representation appointment in the town charter, the candidate cannot be a registered Democrat. So we've posted that in the paper. I feel it's inappropriate to sit there and vote on this after we had that discussion. We agreed that we were going to move it to December, and now we're here today considering to put these new appointments up. So I would like to call this for a vote. So anybody else have anything else to delete before we vote? Just hurry to add anything? Ann, Jeff, Scott? Okay, anybody else would like to talk about moving this to December or keeping it today?
No, Jeff, I think, given the posting in the River East, I think we just, I think it's just prudent that we move it to December.
Okay, I agree with you. All right, all those in favor of eliminating item seven? Aye?
Aye.
Four, nothing. All the candidates and the members that came, so Beata and and Alicia and Dave, I apologize. But this was something that had been discussed, but I felt it was extremely important to put it out on the record as to why we sat there and decided to move this to December. I hope everyone understands that. I would also ask the public out there to, any, there will be a Republican appointed to this board. And I'm asking, you know, I think we have three great candidates, to be perfectly honest, three good candidates. But if there is someone else out there that might be interested in serving their community and is smart and has common sense, I would, I would ask them to apply because it does not hurt to apply. You know, and I would, I'm extremely sincere about this. I want everyone to apply. So if you have friends out there and they would be considered, you think they would be good for town government? And maybe they don't want to run for this because this is not an election. This is an appointment. And I hope everyone understands this. This is an appointment. It's not an election. There's no requirement. It's four members voting. We just have to find one candidate that three of us can agree on. So if you have friends out there, please ask them to apply. I think it would be great. Okay? All right, let's move on to item four, Boards and Commission Presentations. Eric, do we have anything?
I don't have any that I know of.
Okay. Item five, appointments. Do we have any appointments to make?
None.
Item six, any resignations and please tell me no?
Uh, yes. Diane Graniere announced today that she was resigning from the library board due to life complications. Let's put it that way.
That is a sad day.
That is a sad day. She's spent a lot of time in this town.
I think the entire community should thank Diane Graniere for all her years of doing Andover this and that and to sit there and put the time in to come to most of our meetings. And I understand that she has some issues going on, and my prayers are definitely with her. And stop with the resignations. All right. Items, item eight, Town Administrator's Report. And just for the record, I assume that you dated your report incorrectly.
Yep, certainly did.
All right, go ahead. You can give it to us now.
All right. So I'm going to share my screen and just talk you through a couple of things. You should see the screen with my Administrator's Report. First item up, just notification that Diane did resign from the library board. The second item up, and we're going to discuss it a little bit later, but it's mostly a Board of Finance that should be driving the train on this is that there should be some dates proposed for a meeting between the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, and Board of Education that's enshrined in the charter change that just came out. It was supposed to be in October, but since that's before the charter change, there's not a lot we can do about it other than moving that meeting up as much as possible. So the proposed dates are listed there, December 3rd, December 12th, December 16th. You know, it sounds to me at this point like December 3rd seems to be the most popular among Board of Ed, Board of Finance. But if the Board of Selectmen has a strong opinion on which dates they would most prefer the meeting to be, I will happily pass that on to Mark Brinker. So that's the first thing, and we can discuss that a little bit later. So I sent around to all the boards today what my proposal was for the timing for this year's budget process since, since a lot of things have changed as the new charter takes effect. And the new charter takes effect immediately for things related to the budget. The residency trooper did arrest a resident on Center Street for voyeurism and a couple of other things. Hopefully, he'll, he'll make big rocks into little rocks for a while in the penal system. Additionally, we had an individual decide to do a large burn of leaves in his backyard yesterday that the fire department and fire marshal had to respond to. I did put out another warning on the website and the alert system just to remind people that they're not supposed to be burning stuff right now. We're still in an extreme fire. You know, red flag warning as far as the state's concerned. So please don't burn anything. Still working on the destratification fans for the gym. I still don't have the final quote back from Seaward Electric. So that, but hopefully I will have that this week. Stuff related to the community center. I have a, a call into our congressional office asking what the, they think the status is likely to be for the congressional appropriation that we requested. The answer I got back was probably not until sometime in the spring, there would be a decision. They seem to be a little bit depressed. So they kind of hinted that there might be a low probability of success at this point. So that's all I know. You know, there's also something later in the packet talking about sound dampening for that facility as well as the town hall. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, we started looking into what it would cost. The senior group has been watching movies in town buildings as an organized group for quite a while. That's not technically legal. So we started looking into what it costs to make that legal. The bottom line is it's about 1,500 bucks a year for the annual license for centers like ours. So it's not a small. So at some point, the board should make a decision whether they think that's a valuable thing and worth the money or not. There is, we did sign the final paperwork for the ARPA Senior Center grant. So we have about $10,000 available right now and that we should be on the way to spending by December 31st. So we'll discuss that again later in the packet. We do finally, as of today, have the fiber connection to the new building up and working. We don't have everything hooked up, but we at least have the Wi-Fi working in that building through a fiber connection. So that's positive. So the new CEO is hired and in training. So that's the, he's working both on the CEO end of things and also on light enforcement. It's still going to be months before he's really capable of taking over for Jim Halcy. So that's underway. I am planning on signing the NICOG contract now regarding the animal control officer since we legally can hire them as our animal control officer, thanks to the charter change. So that was good. The other thing I wanted to talk to the board about is there were a lot of people that were unhappy with our decision as to how we bid out the roadside mower. So what is the board's feeling about the disposition of the plow truck? And how would the board like us to? I mean, it seems like our options are send it to the auction house, try to bid it out ourselves, or use govdeals.com. You know, and I'm open for any solution you want to do. I just don't want to hear about it after the fact. So if you all have guidance on how you want to do that, I'd be happy to comply.
Eric, why don't we try, why don't we try a round on GovDeals with a reserve and see what we get? And then maybe if that doesn't pan out, maybe we just send it to auction and we get what we can. That would be my recommendation.
All right.
I don't know what everybody else thinks, but that would be my recommendation.
That's fine, but Eric, I would ask you, what is Jay's? What, where does Jay feel the town would get the most money?
Jay thinks the most likely person to buy that truck is a town that's desperate and needs a backup truck. So he thinks we'd be better off doing it ourselves and putting it out on the Public Works listserv, but you know.
Okay, can he, can he give us, can he give us the number that he believes he would get so that we could? And we could go slightly under, but set the reserve that Jeff is requesting?
Sure. So you just want it set with a reserve, what Jay thinks it's likely to actually sell?
No, what Jay likely thinks it would sell for, the way that he anticipated doing it. So that if it goes out on the board that Jeff is expressing and where we have a reserve set for it, we at least can get close to it. And, you know, listen, it's a bid process. So you're setting a reserve, you're going to get at least the reserve. You may, or you may not get anything. So.
And to add to that, if Jay knows that there's people interested in the truck, you can always tell him it's on GovDeals. So.
Yep. Okay. All right. So next up, Bunker Hill Bridge Design. There were six design or six companies that sent proposals for to be the bridge constructor for Bunker Hill Bridge. Of those six, five were disqualified for failure to meet the bid requirements, which is really unfortunate and really picky. But since the State Department of Transportation sent somebody from their contracts administration unit and their engineering department to oversee us doing the bids. That's the way it is. So we already have the construction monitoring firm selected. So that's, that's under. We're still looking at around February 15th to start the utility relocation and building the first water coffer dam. So we are still on schedule for that. The contractor that is selected has a good working relationship with the construction inspection firm. So that should make things go slow or go quickly. And at the end of the day, the town isn't paying for any of this anyway. You know, it's being funded by state and federal tax dollars, not town tax dollars.
Can you go back to this for a second? Because I just got a question. And by the way, CDR or CD McGuire is no relation to me. So are you telling me that we had six applicants bid and five were disqualified?
That's exactly what I'm telling you.
And the bid was overseen by CD McGuire?
No, the bid was overseen by Close Jensen and Miller, who is the firm the state hires to manage the design by state process for bridge design. CDR McGuire is the firm that actually did the final design of the bridge. And they are the company that has to certify that the applicants, the bidders all produce a competent bid. But when you do a bid opening, the state provides you a checklist. And basically you go down and ensure that everything that is on the checklist is submitted. And whenever there's something that's that's in the public notice and that's not submitted, the bid is rejected.
Understood. No, I, I, the way you were, you wrote it, I was, it just appeared that CD McGuire was doing the entire process. So that's okay. Close Jensen was the overseers of the bid.
Right. And, and I mean, I, I'm I'm doing the bid opening with Close Jensen and Miller and the DOT, you know, so it's not like I'm not in the room. We're all in agreement on it. It's just, it's an annoyance to me that the companies couldn't read, you know, the notice of record and comply in a reasonable fashion.
All right. No problem. You can keep going.
Yep. So those are the major things that I have in this meeting, and I'll certainly take any questions that you all have relative to my report.
Tree removal for Bunker Hill is scheduled and and is, there's no hiccups on that?
It's in progress.
Okay. All right. I'll let you settle that up later. Anybody else have any questions for Eric?
Yeah, just one quick question, Eric. Regarding the Long Hill Bridge Design, we're engaged with the state, right? For a temporary light at Hendy and Route 6, or is that kind of off the table at this point?
Um, it's not off the table. But every time they look at it, they tell us the traffic warrants don't warrant a signal at that intersection. So at the end of the day, I don't think they're going to do it.
I mean, even a temporary basis during the Long Hill construction, because all that traffic is going to get funneled onto Hendy. And then with the camp, actually, with the camp reopening, we're going to have an enormous amount of traffic at that intersection.
I've made that point multiple times, but so do I think it's going to happen? Probably not.
That's going to be a problem. So.
No question. No question.
How do we, how do we approach this? I mean, is there anything, any other avenues we can pursue to try to get at least a temporary light there?
I mean, your only, your only real avenue if the DOT box, you know, is to go after it legislatively and get MD Rahman and Steve Weir to to try to intercede on the town's behalf. You know, they can they can make inquiries through the DOT's legislative liaison and maybe put a little pressure on them. And I certainly intend to do that. But at this point, they haven't, the DOT hasn't said they're not doing it yet. So I'm kind of not wanting to push that button until they actually come out and say they're not going to do it. And what I would really like to do is get them to agree to a permanent light there, not just a temporary light. But, you know, I don't know. I mean, the reality is a temporary light wouldn't decrease the accident rate there. But it probably would, you know, make traffic flow from that area better.
Agreed. I just want, I just want to keep, keep some attention on that issue to make sure that we follow up on that down the road. So.
Hey, I have invested interest because that's going to be my commute every day. The whole time the bridge is under construction. So.
Yeah, I mean, all those left turns out of there is going to be, it's going to be difficult without a light there. I can tell you that right now.
DOT needs a deadline. Please, please, please get a dead. I know they don't believe in deadlines and they won't listen to little old Landover giving them a deadline. But if we're going to get a legislative issue to to potentially solve this, we're going to need some time.
Yeah, because one thing I've noticed in the last six months is the amount of people returning to work and the amount of traffic on Route 6 is significantly increased. And even the traffic on 384 has increased in the morning. So we really need to keep an eye on this, make sure that we have something there in place when we take that bridge out.
And Eric, just so the public is aware, I believe the last time that we sat there and submitted the DOT and they rejected us, they said there were no fatalities at that location. Wasn't that one of the points that?
No, I mean, basically what they say is it's only a crisis for about two and a half hours a day. So there's this thing called level of service, which is the time it takes to get through an intersection. And they go back to the the CROG, you know, study, which was the only serious traffic engineering study at that intersection. And what that study showed is that for about an hour and a half in the morning and an hour and a half in the evening, that intersection has a level of service of an F, basically. It's a scale that runs A through F. And their argument is that since the majority of the day, the level of service is in an acceptable range that they're not going to put a light on something for only that short a period of time. So that's been the DOT's position. And that that's a standard that that runs along with the federal, you know, transportation, you know, warrants.
Okay. Anything else for Eric? Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question that maybe you'll cover it later, but under Town Hall Community Room, you had sentenced, I would like to consider purchasing permanent furniture for the room to make it a bit more professional. What do you mean by permanent furniture?
So here's the problem we have is that you know, we're, we're talking about going back to in-person meetings. And that works great if you can leave your in-person system setup. You know, you put the the owl meeting camera, you mount one on the wall, you put one in the center and you have a third microphone. That way you can hear things, you can see everybody. And it works good for a hybrid meeting, which is in-person plus virtual. You know, the, the problem comes in is that because a bunch of groups are still using it, they come in and disconnect everything and push it all aside. You know, and then every meeting and group that comes in and tries to use that then takes up a half an hour of my time reassembling everything and making the system work again. And I don't necessarily want to be coming back in here at seven because the Planning and Zoning Commission is meeting and needs to set the room up for hybrid. So my suggestion is that since we have a community center now, oh, sorry, and I'll stop sharing. Since we have a community center and we are going, we have essentially an equivalent room there that we leave, we do what most towns are and and have a permanent dedicated meeting room in that space and set it up to look fairly professional. That would be my, my recommendation. Certainly, this is the only town hall I've gone to that doesn't have any kind of permanent meeting space for the town.
Yeah, this is something I agree with Eric on. I think we need to make that room a dedicated meeting space for all our organizations like the Board of Finance, Planning and Zoning, and you know, other committees and commissions that have meetings. Every other town has one and we really don't. We're, we're kind of meeting on temporary tables and it would make sense probably doing something permanent in the future if we're going to do hybrid meetings.
Other small towns often have to shift stuff around like we do, but I know the larger towns all have permanent stuff. Well, that's a good thought.
Any other questions for Eric? Okay. Item nine, old business. Nine A, Community Center signage discussion.
So we left that off a couple of months ago. I know you wanted some input on what the sign was going to look like for the center of the the community center. Has any more progress been made on that?
Obviously not.
Who was going to do it?
I think Paul, I think Paula was involved right before she resigned. And I think that's why it kind of fell off the radar. Be honest.
I'll sit there, I'll sit there and get some layouts for you guys. I'll do.
Well, you know what? Let me, let me talk to Paul and see what she has, that she had at the time, and maybe we can pick up from where she left off.
All right. We can do that. A discussion, nine B, discussion of blight and level of involvement.
I'm just keeping that on the the agenda for visibility. I don't have anything really particular to discuss about that right now, other than to say, you know, we're going to be slowly transitioning to a new blight officer and a new CEO.
Well, I don't mind that you just keep it there, but I did like the report that was provided monthly. I do think that's beneficial. Even if it's, even if it's not updated, what it does is just make us aware of these are the potential locations and we can all understand it. So.
Sure.
Include that.
Back the report.
Yeah.
Okay.
Item nine, C, King Property Agreement. Agreement to Split Cost of Establishing Monumentation.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take that one too. So we had, as we all know, we went to town meeting and the town meeting approved the, the setting the boundary between the King property and the town property and the and carving out the area right by Burnet Brook in the parking area to be town property. The, the problem came in is that that they've never pinned that. So there are actually no boundary monumentation for that. And Mr. King did not feel like it was solely his responsibility to pin that. So my suggestion is that we split the cost of monumentation with Mr. King. Mr. King has agreed to that. And we get the the surveyor out there to pin it right now and then finish the transaction and put this thing to bed. That's my suggestion. But I don't know how the board feels about, about that approach.
What's the town's cost, Eric?
About 1,200 bucks.
I make.
Let's get it done.
I, 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 I make a motion that we authorize Eric to enter into agreement to split the cost for establishing a monumentation on the King property with the King family.
I'll second that.
Okay. We'll give it to Scott. All those in favor? Four, nothing. Okay.
Okay, done deal.
Nine D, Burnet Clock Discussion. Before we get into this and before we even talk about this, if we decide to sit there and take the current community room and make it a a meetings, meeting room, the clock might fit there. I, I, all this discussion about the clock drives me insane because I don't know where to put it. I, no one knows where to put it. It's a beautiful antique. We're, we're going to be storing it for the owner. We're going to be paying insurance for the owner. If you sit there and we decide as a board to sit there and make the community room a meeting room, then you may have a spot for the clock where it will, it will be visible to the community during meetings and may make some sense. But other than that, honestly, it just keeps coming up in our meetings and we keep kicking it down the road and we're going to just keep kicking it because it's, it's a difficult, it's a difficult play. It's difficult to put it in the right spot. But I'm just throwing that out there. And we don't have anything else on the agenda related to this. That's just being held over because we never make a decision on it.
Well, at the last meeting, you asked me to confirm with the insurance company with Karma that there was minimal or zero. I had said it would not cost us anything to have the cut the clock on the property. And they confirmed that that fits under both their fine art clause. And there's one other clause in our contract. So they will in fact ensure that for the value provided, and I gave that in the appraisal value. If you make the decision to put that either in the community center or wherever you want to put that. So that was the only thing I had to contribute to the discussion that was brought up at the Community Center Advisory Board. There was some discussion or correction, the Senior Center Advisory Board. There was some discussion over that, but ultimately, I'm not sure they ever reached a conclusion. Some people were in favor of it and some people weren't. So that's all I have.
Okay, but no cost to the town if we, if we house the antique?
No, no insurance cost.
No insurance. Yeah.
Jeff, Jeff, I like your idea of putting it in the, the meeting space. I think that might be the good compromise going forward.
I mean, if we do it and we display it correctly, it'll be nice addition to a dais that you could set up.
Well, one concern I have is that down the road in the community center, there's going to be events and all kinds. I mean, we don't know who's going to be in there. I mean, we, we're going to know, but I mean, there'll be maybe some wedding parties and things like that. And, you know, I'd hate to see it get damaged and it would probably be a safer spot to put it in the, the meeting space.
I agree. It's something that we should think about.
I spoke with Jeff Ballard and the owner of the clock. He came too. And they had chosen the space in that smaller room that has the couches in it currently. The concern was to not have it where it would get the heat and air conditioning from the mini split. And that's why they picked that one. And then I've also had contacted Dennis and asked him to get in touch with the owner. I gave him all his contact information and asked him to set up a contract because the owner does want to have a contract with the town on the care of the, the possession of the clock. So I gave all that information to Dennis. I don't know if he's done anything about it yet.
I, I would hope Attorney O'Brien didn't because until we understand exactly where we're putting it, there's no reason to waste his time. So good that he has the information, but I, I wouldn't, I mean, we've been kicking this around for almost.
Why don't we vote on it then?
I thought it had been decided where to put it.
I thought that Anne's, Anne's room that she had picked with Jeff Ballard and the owner was where we're going to put it.
So.
Previously.
In the senior and, and all, let's just go through it. We, we.
The meeting room.
In, in.
I don't know what the room is called. It's the little one with the couches in it. Is that the meeting room?
Meeting room.
Right, but that also implies you're going to take the bookshelf and do something else with the bookshelf. So where are you, where are you proposing to relocate? and do something else with the bookshelf. So where are you, where are you proposing to relocate the bookshelf?
Okay, since we, since we kicked this down the road a long time, let's kick it down the road again. I, I, I honestly think that we really, if we're gonna sit there and furnish the meeting room, it will go best there because Jeff Murray is a hundred percent correct that that space will be rented. And we, we will not always have supervision there. And I would hate to sit there and see an antique like clock like that. I, I mean, until we, until we sit there and have our own meeting space, you can't even, you can at least lock up the meeting space because if we sat there and did it, now the only question I have in my head is, is that space need to be used for anything else? But if it only is used for meetings, which I think is a great use of that space, you then get to control access to the room. So I think there's other things that need to be done. I don't think anyone is, I don't think we've had total agreement on the senior center and community room location. So let's just push it down the road one, one more time and, and the board needs to come to an agreement on what we want to do as far as a meeting space. And if we do come together on a meeting space, that would be my preferred location for that clock.
So just to add to this, Eric, do you have any kind of concept or a drawing or anything that you, you're thinking of for a layout in that room for meetings?
No, I mean, I think I know. I mean, I, I think the orientation is going to follow based off of where the screen is and where I would assume we would permanently mount the Owl Meeting Camera. But, so I would have assumed you would be looking at a U-shaped, you know, seating area around there, and then the audience would be behind that. That would be what I would have assumed. That way everybody can see if there's other participants up on the screen. Um, and you have remote participation. So that's how I would have envisioned that. You know, in a meeting space to take the largest essentially commission we have, which is around seven members. So something designed to seat seven, um, and then with a little platform at the end for somebody that wants to come up and speak.
So my thought is, let's, let's, let's kind of come up with a plan for that room and then where we would put the clock in that room. And then let's look at Anne's, where, where her and Jeff Ballard and the owner talked about the other location. And then we can discuss it next month and just make a decision. Does that sound fair to everyone?
Yes.
We can make the decision next month.
Yes, well, I just look at the two, let's look at the two options and then we'll decide.
Okay. Uh, nine E, solar at Andover Elementary School.
Okay, again, at the last meeting, you asked me to find out to the best of my abilities what the ages of the roofs were in the Andover Elementary School. So I put from you the packet, everything we have in the building files, plus a sketch that I got from the school, which says what ages they think, uh, the roofs are. So that's pretty much all the information that I have. I can certainly share that now if you want to look at it. It was in your packet. I can bring that up if you want to see that.
All of them were done in twenty sixteen, correct? Except for one small, small roof.
Them was two thousand four, two thousand and two thousand sixteen, I think.
No, but you gotta look at where the, their solar panels were gonna be put. Eric, do you have the solar panel layout? You would have been in last month's meeting.
But it was gonna be in, not in, I, I can pull that up too. It was gonna not be on Roof A, which was the one on the gymnasium, but it was gonna be on what this looks like at, at Roof B, Roof C, Roof F, and Roof I were the roofs that were identified for that, which is basically all the large flat roofs.
Let me pull it up on my end.
You want me to just share it?
Yeah, that would be better.
If you can.
Yep. Okay, can you see it now?
Yeah.
So they don't want to use Roof A because gymnasiums tend to not be designed with a roof loading that can support additional weight. So they ruled that out right off the bat for structural reasons. And they were suggesting basically B, C, F, and I as the major roofs. As far as I know.
Okay, but again, can we sit there and see the solar layout so we can match those up? Or it doesn't even matter. If, if they're gonna put it on I and I is a two thousand four roof, we, we should consider not putting it on I, or we should consider thinking about roofing that so that when we put the solar up there, we don't have future problems. Because the two thousand sixteen roofs don't bother me, but in my head, those two thousand sixteen roofs, I don't think we did all that. I mean.
I tried to read, I tried to read through the clerk of the works report and match it up. You know, but I didn't have all the, I only have a partial report from them. So I, I just don't have the information in the building files to really get this. So I don't have a great.
Okay, all right. And I'm gonna, just because, you know, you find problems as you're working through it. Eric, all the links, there are the link for the, the October meeting does not, not contain the October packet. It contains the November packet. So the link is the same link across all of our calendar things. We have to address that. Because the packet should remain with the calendar link. Just because I was looking, because in October, we have the, the solar layout you put in the October packet. So I can't pull up the October pallet, packet even going on the October date. So that's something that we have to look at from the website perspective.
But, but Eric, do you have the layout for the solar?
Yeah, let me pull that up. Uh, I just gotta find it where, where it is in all my files.
And, and this, you know, this is just pushing back to understand. Here we go.
Okay, so you should be able to see that layout. I can't show them both at the same time.
No, that's all right. Just increase the size of that. Okay, so. So you have that small part of the roof. And you have the whole part of the roof to the right. So if you circled America, it would be the, the, the part of the roof that's all the way to the right. And there's a small little section and I believe that might be over the kitchen. And I think, I do remember that we couldn't roof, we couldn't do something. We previously when we roofed that, they didn't want to do anything over the kitchen. But Adrian Mandeville might be a good person to talk to on this, Eric, because he was extremely involved in this project. He, he, he assisted greatly from the Board of Finance position that he was in at the time. So we have two sections that are on potentially areas of the roof that are two thousand four. You can go to that one now. Go, go to that page. So you got two thousand and two thousand and four for the, those two.
Two thousand and two, two thousand and four, yeah.
So it, it's not that, it's not, it's not that it's a problem. We want to do this. We should want to do this. We just want to make sure that we're not having a roof problem that comes up to us and we have to move those units off the roof to then re-roof.
Yeah, I mean, we only got about ten more years on Roof I right now before it's, I mean, you look at the replacement schedule on all the other roofs and you're looking at thirty years.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, this, I was talking to Valerie and she said that that Roof I is a different kind of a roof. It's sort of a gravel surface. It's completely different from the other roofs. So maybe that kind of roof lasts longer. I don't know for sure, but it might.
So I, I'm pretty sure that roof is a hot mopped tar roof with stone. Typically have a twenty-five to thirty-five year roof life.
They're all this, they're, they're all the same. The question ends up being, and, and it's positive in that it's, they're the smaller sections of the roof, but we just need to do the, do diligence to make sure that we don't get in a position where we're having to lift those panels off that roof to re-roof. And it eats away at all the savings that the school would be generating. So. And the other part too, Eric, is to get with them and make sure that we understand from the solar company, okay, these are the two oldest roofs. Well, what will happen if, what would be the cost if we only needed to re-roof these two sections? Anyway.
Okay, so what information, so you're not gonna make a decision now? What information do you want me to try to provide for the next meeting?
Just because we've just identified the age of the roofs, get us a, uh, an estimate of, of what the cost would be if we have to move those panels from those roofs to get to the roof surface. So, because we have to re-roof it. It's just a, a question of can it hold up? And you know, like Jeff Murray said, there's a, if, if we look at the way they did it, it was a thirty-year period on all those other roofs and we ended up re-roofing. Eventually, we're gonna have to re-roof E, I, uh, F, and you know, I know those are pitched roofs and shingled, but eventually we'll have to re-roof those as well at some point in time.
So, so Jeff, well, my concern is Roof I, if you look at back, if, if Eric can bring up the, the solar plant again real quick. If you look at where they say interconnection point, all the wiring for those panels are gonna go across that Roof I. So that's gonna be a problem down the road because if you have to re-roof that roof, I don't know how much we're gonna have to interrupt all those conduits and everything that's run across that roof to that interconnection point. You have a lot of solar panels and a lot of power going across to that spot. So that's just something we need to, to, to voice our concerns about.
That's, that's the reason why it's good to have an electrical engineer on the board because he understands those things. So, I, I, you know.
Did you see like all those panels on the left are all gonna run across to that interconnection point, all those, all that, all that stuff. So if the interconnection point was on the west side of the building, I wouldn't be as concerned, but and I know why they're putting them on I because of that interconnection point and it's on the way. So we made, we made, we need to make the decision if we want to do this and you want to put panels on Roof I, do we move ahead and try to, to, to replace that roof ahead of time? Or do we, you know, move ahead with this project and most likely you're gonna be folding those panels in ten years.
Oh, the, the recommendation should be to re-roof those two roofs before they do panels.
Or you move your interconnection point so you don't have all your power wire going across Roof I.
Well, it's also a timing issue.
Is that where, there's other panels that are down in that building on, in the cellar there though, I think. That's where all their connections are.
Yeah, but that's where they're gonna put all the, so basically what these are, they're DC panels. And it basically converts DC to AC and it matches the phasing to the, the power. So there, there's inverters that go on that, they're gonna probably be on that wall right there where they're saying interconnection point. So all that wiring, all that DC wiring is gonna go across the roof to those inverters.
It will not actually be DC wiring. This system is designed with micro inverters, one per panel.
So you're still gonna have AC going across the roof?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
I don't know if it was a DC to AC system or if it was a completely rectified and inverted. That's gotta be a little expensive trying to, trying to match the, I, I'm gonna get an engineering speak now, but trying to match your phasing on the roof to all those panels is gonna be, seems more expensive than putting large inverters on the walls on the, on that interconnection point. So.
The, the problem they ran into Jeff on this is that, you know, on the commercial side, when you look at fairly large arrays, all the big inverters are three-phase inverters. And because there's no three-phase power here, they would have had to have, you know, probably twenty or twenty-five, uh, inverters, you know, to do it if they didn't go the microinverter route. So their engineer basically said the only way you can make this work, you know, cost effectively, um, and fit in the state program is to do it with microinverters. The thing I'll warn you is that they're pretty close. Talking to green skies, this is pretty, pretty close to being a non-profitable job for them. So, you know, I, I think they're, they're not gonna go through a lot more hoops before they drop this as a proposal. You know, right or wrong, and I'm not, you know, I'm just because they had to downsize the system considerably from what they wanted because it's only, uh, single-phase and they had to go to the microinverters. You know, he basically said it's already a very marginally profitable job for us to install anyway, given what the reimbursement rates are for the state. So I don't think they're gonna take a lot of other changes, um, before they say no.
Yeah, I agree with you. Like trying to pull all those single-phase conductors across that roof is gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a costly endeavor.
So let's just give, um, let's just, Eric and Jeff, and you know, let's sit there and, and get to the the Board of Education, any information and any guidance we can to sit there and make this decision, the correct decision. Because I would hate to sit there and see and say, okay, you can go do it. And then we end up having a roof problem in two or three years and it, you know, whatever, like I said before, whatever savings we have is gone because we have to now move the panels to replace roofs. So.
Well, another thing, Jeff, is if we gotta pull all those conductors off the roof, we're gonna, we'll use the, we're gonna lose the use of those panels for that period of time. Plus, you're gonna have to pay to replace all that wiring. You're gonna have to take it out and replace it when we re-roof. So. And I guarantee they're probably gonna, they're probably gonna rest it right on top of the roof. So it's gonna have to be lifted at some point or completely removed and we, we replace the roof.
So would we go up ahead and, uh, find out what it would cost to get these roofs redone right now to?
No, the Board of Education actually has some of that information.
You know, let the Board of Education know that, that's what they should do.
Well, I will, um, we will speak to them. I'll speak to Celeste and we'll sit there and, you know, express our concerns that those two roofs are, are two thousand, two thousand, two thousand and four, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Two thousand and two thousand and four, and we'll sit there and.
They can move that interconnection point to another location. I wouldn't be as concerned, but I'm just saying all the wiring is gonna go across Roof I.
Understood.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the problem comes down is if you think about conduit runs, the wall they're bringing it down is basically the wall where their main electrical interconnect for the building is. So it certainly makes it the most sense in terms of that. Could you go down the close wall and punch a large conduit through the classroom across the, the hallway into the mechanical room, potentially? It's gonna cost more though.
Yeah, and it's probably gonna eat into just, I mean, you got ten years of life pretty much left on that roof anyways. And really, what's your cost savings down the road versus replacing the roof and just putting the solar in after?
Okay, so Jeff, you're gonna talk to Celeste about that?
I'll talk to Celeste. I mean, we need to make, uh, this needs to be decided quickly because it's a to granted project, which we, I mean, we would obviously like to sit there and see move forward, but we gotta do it correctly. So I will speak with Celeste and then, uh, Jeff Murray, any guidance you can give them would be appreciated.
Right, and for the record, I don't have the, they have not come up with the final engineered set of plans for doing this. Anyway, um, so there's no final layout. At this point, there's nothing that says what the structural roof loads are for any of those roofs. So, um, they're not ready. So um, they're not ready to, you know, to fully present this anyway.
Okay, so I mean, we should make them aware, so if they're engineering it, they can sit there and engineer some of the problems that Jeff Murray has identified.
Yeah, I'd definitely like to see the conduit schedule and the pull drawings, like what we're pulling for conductors and, you know, conduit size and everything. To see what the impact on roof I would be.
So is this information that you would need before them to get a permit to go ahead and put it in?
Absolutely. Yeah, they would, they would. They're gonna give you a a standard set of engineering drawings for both electrical, structural. For all the roofs, um, including conduit layouts, dimensions. Wire sizes, inverter capacity, tie-in, um, and what needs change.
So they'll give you that, give that to the building official to get their building permit. I don't see too much of what else we need to do.
Well, the board is the building owner, right? The town owns the building. This is clearly a capital project. So you as a board need to say yay or nay whether you want this to happen or not.
What does that?
Nope, actually not.
Um, and you can think of it this way, and this is something that I'm gonna speak to the Board of Education tomorrow about. The anything that's in the building or attached to the building is part of the building, anything that's inside the building and movable, no problem. The town owns the structure. Thus, Board of Education manages the structure. Your own attorney said that to us in the last tri-board meeting. So we're not trying to be difficult, and I understand where your focus is, I do understand where your focus is. But we're not trying to be difficult, we're trying to be assistants to make the project correct, so. However, you want to sit there and and believe that and believe what you're 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 dealing with. The building, the structure, is owned by the town. Okay. So do we have any other issues on the solar project with AS? Okay, uh, I am a nine F signage. Encroachment permit for signage signs on Route Six.
So again, at the last meeting, uh. You asked me for a copy of what the exact sign. That they would be putting on Route Six identifying where the trail location was. And I provided you with what the DEP and DOT will agree to put up for the sign.
Okay, so they're putting this Hop River State Park Trail off of Route Six. Going toward Lake Road to where the parking is.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Do you have any problem with the, an encroachment permit for that and putting that sign?
I don't know, I don't have a problem with it, I live on Lake Road, but I don't have a problem with it. Anybody else have a problem with it?
No.
Okay.
And Jeff Murray, anybody? No problems with it? We can go forward with the permit? Okay. All right, um. Nine G, uh, new business, discuss and act upon the following, A, credit card usage. Uh, discussion, approve policy and forms. Eric, related to uh the comments by Carol Lee and the Rec Commission. I do believe we need to address that from a standpoint of um budgeting and. I I I'm. I I understand what they're saying, forget the credit card usage policy, right? The the Rec Commission doesn't need to use the credit card if if that's the choice. But the issue of who approves their spending is really their issue. And I think what you meant, and I think what you meant is to just have Tess assist with the bookkeeping related to it.
So when Tess was hired, Tess was hired to oversee three things. Community Center, Senior Center, and all recreational activities for the town. Now, the Rec Commission doesn't like that. But remember, two years ago, you as a board. Or in the last budget, attempted to put in money to hire somebody. To assist to make sure things were done well. And the Rec Commission opposed that to the Board of Finance. Um, and got the Board of Finance to take that out of the budget. And repurpose that money for something that the Rec Commission wanted to do. Um, and so when we talked about this. Uh, six months or a year ago, when we were talking about what the duties of if we hired a per, a. Director for that position, what they would oversee, the decision was to have them oversee those three things. That is not popular with the Rec Commission.
So you're telling us that people are not working well together is what you're telling us?
Sure, change is always hard. Um, in in my head, I don't care whether you leave the Rec Commission as a commission in charge. Or whether you put that on Tess's to maintain overall responsibility for that. But whichever way you do, it's gonna have to be directed by the board, because the Rec Commission is not going to. Um, you know, they're not gonna play with anybody unless they're forced to, um, if we're being blunt.
Okay, so I don't need you to be blunt in the future. Um, I I need you to just be facts, backs, so, okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna deal with this.
Well, Jeff, my understanding was, I mean, we had a senior services committee, we had the Rec Commission, and Tess was supposed to. Basically take direction from them, and that was our original discussion.
She's supposed to work with him.
Yeah, she's supposed to, so if the if the Rec Commission wants to have a concert or an event, she's supposed to assist and help them with that event. Under their direction.
Right, I I agree with that, but I don't necessarily know that Tess is sitting there telling them what to do. They're not, are they dealing with Tess at all is really the questions, and this is not something that needs to be debated at this meeting. It needs to be understood, because to me. I look at Tess and I go, you, as an employee, you better be utilizing her, because. Yes, I greatly appreciate all the volunteers on the Rec Commission, I appreciate every volunteer that works for this town and a lot, most. A lot of what gets done within this town gets done by volunteers, but. We're trying to put a person in place to sit there and manage certain things and assist with certain things, we need to be using that person. So.
Right, but I would also say that. In retrospect, hiring Tess as a part-time employee and expecting her to do all three probably is not realistic either.
Okay, and and and. The whole point from my end for that individual and being part-time would be to generate revenue. Over programs and run more programs and provide more programs and utilize the the community senior center. More often to generate additional programming revenue, and the Rec Commission has to be a big part of that. So, because they have the experience and things to do, so. Uh, this is a management issue that we have to just make, we have to work together to get people to. Uh, enjoy working together rather than creating any problems, so. We all should sit there and participate in that uh and and work on that issue, so. But. Uh, going to the money, right, going to the money. I don't, I I agree, I agree with Rec Commission, because they have a budget, and unless we choose to not give them a budget, they have a budget to control. They don't need to use a credit card, right?
Then it, then you could simply just say that. Take the Rec Commission off the designated supervisors list. Um, you know, and then I'm the only signer on their expenses. If you want to do that, you can certainly do that.
Isn't that how we do it now?
Not really. I mean, the old system was set up so that boards and department heads could make their own expenditures, but the. Treasurer has been very unhappy about the information she's gotten back in a lot of cases. Regarding credit card expenditures.
Okay, so take credit cards off of the table. Why can't the Rec Commission potentially utilize, uh, you know, an Amazon account and pay for that account by check?
They could certainly order stuff through the town's Amazon account anytime they want. They're not restricted.
And just, just, just from a simple standpoint, I understand we're putting in in controls on the credit cards, but. Why wouldn't you let someone, you know, from the Rec Commission use the credit card?
We would absolutely let somebody use the credit card. They just have to get the expense signed off before they use it. Not afterward, because then you know you're getting the paperwork turned in, and I'm not trying to pick on. The Rec Commission, this policy goes for everybody, including me. Um, you know, and I will admit to some extent. You know, I haven't always submitted the form ahead of a purchase I made as the town administrator. And that's what's got the the treasurer kind of wound up, because not everybody is turning in receipts. And they're spending a lot of time tracking down information and balancing the credit cards when we get the monthly statements. So that's the whole point of this, is just to put in place a policy. That has the proper administration, and we were more lenient with the old policy. But the fact of the matter is, you know, not enough people are complying with that policy. And the financial office is not getting what they need. So that's what this is an attempt to correct.
Okay, so you, so you have, you have policies set up. All right, I will sit there and um I will get with you, Eric, and and work on this policy. So that we can come back and and present it, I'll work with the town, with the treasurer to sit there and make sure that. It's as simplified as it possibly can be. Because, you know, credit card usage is is an ease and inconvenience, so we have to make sure that we're not over. Regulating what's going on, but we have to make, I understand what the treasurer is after, we have to make sure that that's effective. And that they get their information timely, because. You know, as a, as an, as as an accounting department, they don't want to be chasing things down. They wanna know where it's going and what it's for, so. Unless anybody else on this board has an issue with that. That's how I'd like to move forward.
Well, Jeff, I've had a a couple of discussions with Eric about this, and you know, we we should probably identify the three or four. Top heavy hitters that are users of that credit card. And you know, like Public Works should probably almost have their own. And a couple of other departments have their own, it'd be much easier to break out the charges. If we have the charges, it's just attached to that one number, so the treasurer can say, look, this is the Public Works number, these are all Public Works charges. Instead of trying to figure out at the end of the statement, who bought what and for what, and keeping all these slips and trying to backtrack everything. I think it may be more advantageous just to. To look at who our heavy hitters are and just try to give them their own cards for, you know, like three or four departments. Anything that's smaller just goes to Eric or, you know, our our slip policy.
I I think that makes some sense, we'll sit there and look at that.
Okay, thank you.
I know, I, when Eric sent out this new proposed thing, I sent back an email to him and said, what? The old one looked like, because I didn't know, I wasn't here five years ago when this original one was put out. And it doesn't look like there's a huge amount of difference. It looks like they, the signature from the supervisor and administrator and getting your documentation back in one day was the only two changes. Is that right, Eric?
That is pretty much correct. Yep.
So I don't know, the three days hadn't been working, was that?
That's obviously, that's obviously.
What happens is.
Eric, Eric, that's obviously the case, and because the treasurer is asking for changes, so.
She asked for this to be changed?
Yes, it's it's coming from the treasurer, you know, so we gotta sit there and deal with that department. Because they're in control of of our record-keeping and how it happens, so let's sit there and. I I like Jeff Murray's idea, honest, you know, I think it's a great idea, I think it's simplistic, it makes sense.
I mean, Jay's the supervisor of Public Works, he, we should give him the responsibility to to make appropriate charges to the card.
And then it that that it's that it's Jay's responsibility to reconcile his card.
Well, the card will come in and it will be charged to Public Works to their.
No, it'll be charged to Public Works, but he may have twenty charges on that account, and he's gotta break them down by where they go. And so now it's taking it off of the accounting department to reconcile the charges and put it on Jay, he still may need. We still may need some. I will, let me deal with Eric on it, Jeff Murray, I think that's a good idea, I I do.
I mean, just another thing we should do is we have all these recurring charges on the card. We should probably look into either doing, uh, getting a separate account, town account, just for these reoccurring payments. You know, keep a balance of five thousand dollars instead of our main account, and we pay those. You know, with either direct deposit or direct withdrawal out of those accounts, instead of trying to use the credit card, because it's a huge. Money suck every month on on our credit card balance, so that's another thing we should probably look at doing as well.
Okay, we'll sit there and we'll look at all of those issues.
Okay, well, can you talk to the treasurer tomorrow, because she's anticipating this being implemented tomorrow? So I think she's gonna be a little pissed, so you might want to speak with her.
No problem, I'll be happy to do it, Eric. All right, let's move on to uh.
So and just to be clear, so now boards and commissions can spend whatever they want and borrow their credit card whenever they want, as long as they comply.
Eric, Eric, you are in control of the cards, right?
Not according to the old policy.
Are are you in control of the cards today?
They're in my pocket, so yes.
There you go, Eric, so we're all good, right? You keep the cards in your pocket until we get a resolution, and it'll make the treasurer happy, is that good?
Okay, fair enough.
Right, thank you. All right, uh, nine GB. Uh, schedule a joint meeting in a Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, Board of Education to discuss budget priorities for the upcoming year, so. Well, this is. This is part of the charter revision, we'll sit there and get this done December third. Will probably be a, you know, let's, let's all come up with dates for that, because Caitlin um has uh. Uh, is looking to spearhead that meeting. And it's gonna be a joint combination, it's gonna be this joint budget meeting, but it's also gonna be the tri-board meeting. That we had in last year or the year before, and we haven't had since, so this was something that. We should do just to get everybody together and talk over uh the issues that we continue to have. As to our current relationships, as to how they they deal with the Board of Selectment and the and the Board of Education and the Board of Finance, so.
Jeff, do we tell them we want to schedule that for December third? You want to just make a push now?
Well, I would think you would probably make a motion. To recommend to the Board of Finance, because technically they're the ones that should be seeking input. From the other two boards regarding the budget.
Okay, but if we're comfortable with the third, if everybody here is comfortable with the third, should we just put that forward to the Board of Finance, saying that's, that date's okay with us? Because their meeting is coming up, correct?
That's fine, let's make the motion.
Meeting's on the twentieth.
So let's get that, we can get that to them, and then that way they can talk to the board head and put the meeting together.
December third is fine for me.
Scott, Ian?
Fine for me.
Fine for me.
So Jeff, you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we suggest December third is the meeting date for the tribe, was it tri-board meeting?
Yeah, that's good.
To the Board of Finance.
I'll second that, all those in favor, I. Four, nothing. GC, update on bridge construction, you already gave us that.
Yeah, we can ignore that.
GD, uh, agreement on fire marshal mutual aid, that was in your package.
Yeah, so this is basically, uh, this has been a discussion that's been going on between Andover, Bolton, Columbia. Regarding basically just mutual aid and mutual support for the fire marshal. In case something really big happens where we need multiple fire marshals to do an investigation, not something that's. Not something that's likely to be invoked very often. Doesn't cost us any money. It just says we're all authorized to act as fire marshals in those three towns, um, if something happens. So I would suggest that we authorize me to sign that and move on. I think Columbia has already signed it. I don't know that Bolton has already.
All right, I make a motion that we authorize Eric to sign, uh, the agreement for fire marshal mutual aid. Anne got that one. Yes, all those in favor? Aye. Four, four, nothing, Eric.
Okay, thank you.
I, GE. GE, community center update, discussion on, uh, cellular shades for the community center. I, I'm just gonna, we're just gonna go through all the sound deadening materials for the community center, sound deadening materials for the town hall community room. And we'll go from there. So those are, uh, the shades for the community center. I s- I saw your quote and what you're quoting for the community center and do you have a, uh, where are we pulling this money from? Let's talk about that. Where would you, uh, would recommend pulling money? What fund?
So I would take that right from the multi-use building fund, which we intended, the money we have aligned for doing the community center in.
Okay, Anne, you did not like the use of that fund?
I just, it just seems like it's a lot of different things coming from that fund. I didn't know. Is that what the fund's designed for?
Yes.
Well, we had identified we were going to spend at least 150,000 from that fund to finish off the building. So I think taking it from that fund is appropriate.
Okay.
So Eric, you're talking cellular shades. You're talking about the insulating type?
Uh, yeah, they're a little insulating. I don't think they're that insulating, but yes.
Okay, cause they have like a double and a triple insulated cellular shade that you can buy. They really boost our value of the windows. So I didn't know if that's what you had envisioned?
No, just a, just the two-layer, the standard cellular shade. The, the problem is when we start asking for fire rated assemblies, it really knocks down our choices on a lot of these things. I did ask because I don't pick colors and I don't pick designs for stuff like that. So I asked Kathy DeRosa, um, and then Diane Choquette. Once we had the, uh, info from two of the, the blinds companies to come in and pick designs and colors for the community center, both for that as well as for the sound deadening materials. You know, and that's essentially what, what they chose. Um, you know, we had a series of different options. Um, the, yeah.
So, but.
So the shades are sound deadening and shades?
They're gonna be a little bit sound deadening. They're not gonna be, we're not relying on the shades to be the major sound deadening elements. Because as soon as you put the shades up, they're essentially useless for sound deadening.
Okay.
So we're relying.
Room dark, room darkening.
They're, they're designed to be room darkening, um, and aesthetic.
You can get either or. You can just either get a standard cellular shade or you can get a room darkening shade. Did you, did you look at measuring and trying to go to an online like Steve's Blinds or, or another company like that? Because I found in the past that the prices are almost half of what you deal with a local contractor.
And then how do you install all this stuff?
Well, Public Works has been doing some of it, haven't they? Or even our, even our handyman, uh, cleaner has been doing some of this work too. Correct? I'm just asking the question, that's all. Did we lose Jeff? Anne, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, because it looks like we lost Jeff. We've lost, you are now the host.
Oh, wow.
I don't know what happened. We lost a bunch of people.
I see that. I don't see Eric either.
Eric, we lost Eric. Eric froze. I asked him a question about the blinds, about going online for him and he froze and we lost him. So.
I know my lights blink a tiny bit.
He, he got kicked off the internet.
So you may be able to have, you may have to let them back in, cause since you're the host now.
Well, let's see here, how I do that.
Do you have a waiting room that you can go and let them back in?
Is that under participants? No.
I could try to call Eric real quick and see what we need to do, cause he was probably the host.
I don't see where I'm host. Nothing changed on my.
Well, I said, I just got a thing that said you were host. Let me check and see if I can get a hold of Eric.
Okay.
Hey Anne, it's Stephen King. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Click on, if you click on participants at the bottom of your screen, the participants window should show up and you should see anybody in a waiting room.
Okay, yes, I see that. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
There was two people there.
Sorry, I seem to have lost my internet house. I'm trying to rework some things.
Yeah, I just talked to Eric. Eric's back in as the host, I believe, and, um, you guys had a power outage real quick?
Yeah. Power outage at the town hall.
Yeah, we lost a bunch of people.
Okay, hold on for one second. I'm gonna try to get back in the other way. Sorry, 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 sorry.
Okay. That's better.
You gotta unmute Jeff. Unmute. You're muted.
Audio.
There you go. You're back.
Video. Okay, there I am. Okay, one second.
Hmm, it's interesting. Whatever kicked, whatever the connection was, it except, cause the town's on fiber. So it screwed up that connection as well as whatever internet was on the lake, which is probably what Comcast?
Yes. Okay. So Eric, you, we were on, uh, the shades and the sound deadening materials. So we have various quotes, have, has Diane Choquette and Kathy DeRosa made it, uh, are they recommending anything to us?
Yeah, the options we had, they preferred the cellular shades, um, essentially just a white color. That's pretty much it. And then the question is, I asked them also to quote it both ways, to quote it either with a, uh, you know, essentially automatic controllers or just opening them up manually. It's a couple thousand bucks extra if you want to go to uh, an automated controller.
And, and did they pick, do they have a preference on one of these companies? I mean, because there are two different types.
Right, the only ones that had the, if we're going with the cellular shade, Alpha Arrow was the only company that we brought in that had the fire rated cellular shades. The other companies had different options about Roman shades and other things. Um, and we talked about drapes versus shades versus, you know, and they both decided that drapes would not be appropriate in that facility. Um, and they wanted something compact that was inside the actual window and that when it was all the way rolled up, took up the minimum amount of the top of the window, which is why they thought cellular shades was the best solution for that.
Okay, so you're talking a difference of 7,300 to $5,000.
Correct.
Motorized.
I mean, I think the motorized was, is cool, but do I think it's 2,300 dollars cool?
Yes.
They don't make cordless, just the cordless ones without the cords, because that's the ones I have in my home. They're cordless and you just, you just pull them up and down and they're.
Right, that's, that's what we're getting. Um, that, that's the, the lower, the lesser of the two quotes are ones you just, they have a little pull tab on the bottom. You push them up, you pull them down. That's what I have.
Those should be adequate. Those, those would be adequate.
How high are those windows?
Uh, they're not so high that you can't pull them down.
Okay, all right, then that's fine. So do we want to make a motion to go with the estimate 4967 from Alpha Arrow?
Anybody?
Yep. I mean, I'm assuming that's the one, Eric, correct?
Correct.
How many windows is that?
That's two things in here. Which one is which? Oh, I see. One's remote control, okay.
The two from Alpha Arrow, those two quotes really only differ as to whether you have motorized or non-motorized.
Okay.
It's about a 20, $200 adder to motorize them all with a single controller.
Okay, so the 5,090 is the one that was not motorized?
Correct, cellular shades from Alpha Arrow.
So the motorized ones, they were either going to be all open or all closed?
Uh, no, they can be opened or closed individually, but a single controller can control the exact number of windows we have in the computer, commuter room. So you can have them go all up and down together, or you can have individual ones go up and down, depending on what you want to do.
You, you just get a remote and program it, but.
My, my fear would be we'd lose the remote or something to the remote and then we can't put the.
How many, how many remotes are we gonna have to have?
Or if we're gonna use it when the power goes out, or if the power goes out, we need to open and close the blinds, we can't do it. Unless we have the generator going, I guess.
Well, no, they're, they're not hardwired.
They're battery.
They're just battery.
Battery operated one, so.
Yeah, which opens, which opens another can of worms. Like, everybody's gotta go up there and change the batteries periodically and, you know. So I think the manual ones will be fun.
They're, they're, they're like, just from that standpoint, they, they probably have like 6D batteries in those, those motors, Jeff, so they last a long time, but we'd lose the remote, so.
Yeah, the batteries are gonna die, the batteries corrode, you know, and it's just, it's just not a good.
All right.
Long-term solution.
I, I, I'll make a motion that we move forward with Alpha Era quote 4967 for $5,090 for shades for the senior center, community center building to be taken out of the multi-use building font.
Seconded.
Right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, uh, Eric, the, um, sound deadening.
Okay, so the, the, the goal is basically to provide enough sound deadening material on the walls to get you below a certain reverberation threshold, because we all know the, the main community center room is pretty bad. Um, so, and the other problem we have is that we do have a reflective surface in the floor because it's not a carpeted floor, so we will have to have some panels on the ceiling. Um, so the acoustic engineer gave me essentially multiple, multiple ways to do that. This is the most cost-effective way that I could find other than making the panels ourselves, which is use a mix of one inch thick and two inch thick panels. The two inch thick panel does a little bit better dealing with bass uh, or bass rather than one inch panel. They're pretty close in performance on higher frequencies. The two inch works better on absorbing lower frequency. So the way this is set up is, uh, a certain portion is on the ceiling and the rest are on the walls. Um, and what I worked is just to make a kind of symmetrical design. So on the walls, we're putting all, you know, uh, vertical tall panels. Um, and they will match pretty closely what the paint is on the wall now. So the goal is to, to not to contrast as much as possible, to make them blend into the existing wall surfaces. So I had a conversation with William Bell. William said he's put these up before for the town of Hebron. He's happy to take that on as a project um, for the community center. Um, it's fairly expensive to ship this stuff, um, because it's coming up from Virginia. Um, so my suggestion is if we can do it, um, we order the materials for both the community center um, and the community room at the same time.
That's an ungodly amount of shipping. I mean, how many pallets are we talking? You can't be talking that many pallets.
Well, remember they're fairly big, because these, a lot of these panels we're purchasing are 10 feet long. You know, so it's coming up from Virginia via freight.
Okay. Can you get the tax off of there at least?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And is this gonna do, have you run this by Kathy and Diane regarding the aesthetics of that room?
Yes, yes. We've had extensive conversations about both rooms. Um, and, you know, then, and they picked, uh, the fabric. I gave them about 100 choices in fabric color. And they picked both the wall and ceiling fabric for that room as well as the community room in the town hall.
I'm looking at the pictures in your packet and one somewhere like an off-white and then there's one that's like a blue-gray. Where is that one going?
So the blue-gray is going on the community room in the town hall on the blue wall. Um, behind the projector screen mounted up high over the screen.
Okay, great.
Now, in the community, so the community center, the community room in the town hall, because of the layout of that room, um, that has things going for it and things going against it. What it has going forward it, for it is at least it's a carpeted floor. Um, so the acoustic engineer thinks we can get away with, it's less than ideal, but we can get away with putting no panels on the ceiling in that room and have all wall-mounted panels on that room. Um, this doesn't get us to the kind of ideal number acoustically. But, you know, without making the, you know, the, the walls are a real jigsaw puzzle with lots of other little pieces fit in wherever they could fit. To get a clean layout, that's, that's basically how many panels we can. To get a clean layout, that's that's basically how many panels we can fit on the wall. Which equates to about seventy percent of the ideal amount of sound absorption material. Um, if we have to, we can fit additional panels on the ceiling. Um, you know, at a later date. But what I would say is that's an expensive enough project. Let's try to do it with seventy percent of the material. Um, and. You know, see if it's good enough, and if it really is still needs additional, then then we'll go down that. But I don't want to put anything on the ceiling there, the wood ceilings if I don't have to.
So the quote that you have here, there's one for fifty four hundred dollars and then there's another one for. Eight thousand seven hundred dollars, which which is which and what are they for? So.
So the community room. Is the five thousand dollar quote. But that is assuming that we buy them both at the same time and all the shipping. It didn't make sense to, you know, if we're gonna pay for shipping, we ought to ship everything at once. So all the shipping is added to the other quote. For both setups.
You're sprayed on both the quotes.
They're sprayed on both, yeah.
It's the exact same freight. So let's let's put freight aside. You're saying it would be six thousand eight hundred and ninety nine dollars to do the. Community senior senior center.
The town hall community room.
And the community room would be thirty eight hundred dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
It's not the way it's listed here.
Right, I did not look at that carefully.
And is correct, so can we um?
Yeah, I think all that, the freight was not supposed to be on the one for the community center. I think that freight number covered both. Um.
That that makes it, oh, it's extremely odd to me. I would think that there's more. I mean, I I realize the community room is is terrible acoustically. But if you're only doing all walls, I would assume that would be the the lower of the costs.
No, because cement block is inherently worse than drywall to begin with as a reflective surface. And there are also much taller walls and a much taller ceiling than in the community center. So there's a lot more surface area in that room than there is. In the. Community center.
Okay, so. The the community center is the first quote for thirty eight hundred dollars and the community room, which is the second quote. Is six thousand nine hundred dollars.
Correct. Correct.
All right. And you're telling us we'll get to seventy percent of. The appropriate level in the community room and where in the the senior center.
Um, pretty much in the senior center, pretty much to what their recommended reverb level for that room is.
All right, um. Do we want to vote on this without the final numbers, you know, taking out the taxes, getting the freight right? What would we, what would we like to do? Would we like to just give? Eric a ballpark to sit there and move this forward or not do it at all? What's the choice?
Can we just make a motion for not to exceed?
Sure.
Yeah.
So.
If exceeds that amount, he's gonna have to come back. We're gonna have to discuss it, but.
Seven. Uh, eleven. Uh, how about twelve thousand five hundred for both both buildings? Anybody?
Eric, okay with that?
Yeah.
Eric, that's that's excluding taxes. I'm adding.
Twelve hundred.
Fifteen hundred for for freight, which. I just still think that's absorbing it, but.
It's a pretty obscene number.
I mean, listen, I like to.
Rent a truck and go down there yourself for that.
I'm happy to rent a U-Haul for you and you can drive down and pick it up.
But but I would like, I mean, anyway.
I can't drive it.
Doesn't make any sense. Um. So I I'll make a motion that, so I'm just trying to make sure I'm correct. So it's seven for one. It's. It's four for the other, so that's eleven plus fifteen hundred dollars to cover freight, because the assumption is that there's one freight charge for. Twelve hundred ninety eight dollars. They just put.
I'm pretty sure that's correct, because when we talked about it, I told them to put all the freight. On the the community center, not the community center. The community room side, because that was gonna be the bigger bill anyway. Um.
So I I make a motion that we authorize Eric to work with Acoustical Solutions to do. Uh, the sound deadening uh, treatments for the community room and the. The senior slash uh, community center. Uh, great room, uh, not to exceed twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Seconded.
I'll second that.
Further discussion on that item? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, E four software package, my senior center.
Yeah, we discussed this last week, but we didn't really make or last month, but we didn't actually make a motion. Um. So again, we looked at multiple software packages for that. I think my senior center is the most appropriate. For the things we're doing. It's basically forty eight hundred bucks upfront. To put the whole thing in and after that, the annual fee is about seventeen hundred a year to use it. Um. You know, for the software package for running the facility.
And that handles. With the majority of what that building is gonna be required to do, how about transportation, all that good stuff, calendars?
Handles calendars and transportation perfectly. Um, where it would be a little imperfect is trying to fit it in to handle all the recreation. If we started doing field scheduling and things like that on that. That's a weakness. It can be done, but it's not uh, not as easy through this package.
And you and Tess are both in agreement on this software?
Yes, very definitely. And and frankly, the other option is about three times the cost.
Okay.
So what will this? Program do for us?
So for one thing, it allows you to track everything. Um, it allows people to pay for events directly. Um, either right on the spot or ahead of time. It allows people to sign up electronically for programming. Um. You know, so you can run the luncheon programs, you can run senior transportation. You can run events and programming. Basically, everything goes through. Uh, one module, basically.
And where would you take this be from?
Uh, I would take that from the multi-use building fund also. Because we don't have anything set aside. Um. You know, in the community center budget to cover any of this.
I would just like to see it budgeted in the next years. I mean, it's, I know we'd have to wait, but I'd almost like to see this budgeted in next years instead of expending. It seems like we're bleeding down the community center fund pretty pretty rapidly. And this is a, this is not a, this is not a one-time expense like blinds and soundproofing. This is a reoccurring expense.
The the reoccurring expense of seventeen hundred doesn't bother me. It's the forty eight hundred dollars.
Yes.
So, but. The seventeen hundred dollars beginning in year two, so the first year is forty eight hundred, year two is seventeen hundred dollars.
Yeah, so think of it as thirty one hundred dollars to set this thing up and implement it. And then seventeen hundred bucks a year to run.
Where I understand where you're at, Jeff, and you, I would like to have it been in our budget. We're. We're just getting organized. I think it's probably important to sit there and try to give them the tools or test the tools to run that place. Effectively, so. While I would like it.
One thing I'd like, have we have we run this by by any of the commissions like the senior commission and the rec commission? I would just want to know if the seniors are comfortable using this. I mean, have we discussed this at a senior luncheon or? I mean, well, seniors.
Well, a lot of our, a number of our seniors already have the tags and log-ons from when they go to other. Community centers. Because the majority of community centers, at least in the area, run this. Coventry does. Um, Columbia does, Bolton does. So this is kind of what most towns are doing in this area. Um.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to ask that question. That was all.
Yeah, no, it's it's a, it's a good question, uh, no, no doubt, and. Yeah.
I I would assume though that, I mean, because I sit there and look at it a little bit differently. Isn't this where Tess is gonna be utilizing it when a a senior comes in and needs to do something or calls? And says they have to to set it up, set up an appointment. She would still do that if they didn't have the technology.
Yeah, absolutely. And and the the way this works is anybody can do it from home. If they want to register from something, but you can also walk right in the front door. And it's basically a touchscreen and you just say, who am I? You know, either you type your name in the thing or you have a little card and you keycard into it. Um, and then you say, I'm here for this and you're registered. And it keeps track of everything. So when you're going for funding and you're trying to figure out. How many rides you gave on senior transportation, all of that information is in there. So that that's part of the objective. Uh, for it.
So so like you said, there was a, there was an issue with, you know, recreational type. If we want to start signing people up for pickleball and. Drop-in basketball and uh, youth basketball and some of those other activities. You said it's problematic for that type of use.
So. If you're talking about registering somebody for pickleball or drop-in activities. That it can accommodate that. Where you start having problems is if you want to lay out a recreation schedule for the field. And you want to assign different times to like lots of different groups. It's not optimized for that. Can it do it? Yes. Is it difficult? Yes. So that's the one thing that I think is kind of the weakness of this software. Versus the the civic rec platform, which we also looked at.
Okay, if somebody wanted to sign up for guitar lessons, yoga, that type of things, if it's gonna be offered, that's gonna be able to be signed up for using this app.
Yeah, that that's exactly what this is for. This is for normal operations in a community center or a senior center for programming. It's very easy for you. As the administrator essentially to set it up and to put the, put the event in. Um, everything shows up as a calendar. Um, you know, and anybody can sign up and then it automatically tracks who's there. You know, if you have yoga and, you know, you have a capacity of fifteen people, it knows. You know, when the fifteenth person has signed up for it, it can't sign up anymore. So that kind of thing, it's it's kind of useful for.
And so is it, how's the e-commerce, e-commerce wing of this work? Does it, is it just, it's it's set up for secure credit card transactions?
It can be, yes.
Is there an additional charge for that or is that included for what we're spending the money on?
I think that's in with the fee. But I could be, I'm not positive on that, to be.
Yeah, I would want to make sure that we can do e-commerce and people can sign up electronically with their credit cards and it's uh.
You're probably gonna have to pay transactional fees.
Yeah, if it's like a percent, if it's gonna be one or two percent, I'm gonna have a problem with that. I just want to make sure we have that function if we're gonna purchase this software. Because for me, that's a big, that's that's a big uh. Component of it.
So Eric, can you find that out for us? And can you also do it just so? We're as transparent as possible. He, did you get a quote on the other? Software. Which you said was multiple times the cost, just so we're laying it out there.
Yeah, I could probably get you that quote. Do you want to just have my senior center give you all a presentation at your meeting?
Yes. I would like to ask those questions and and that way I can line it, that way I can take a look at their um. Their software and then I can formulate a bunch of questions.
I I mean, I can also suggest that what I did with Tess was I, we went to Columbia Senior Center. And just saw how this worked in action. Um, because my concern with these things is always that. You know, they can be really cool, but. You know, you don't need somebody with a PhD trying to figure out how to work the thing. And what I got out of it was it was a very easy software for somebody that was running a center to administer. You know, and everybody I watched that walked in was pretty easily able to key code themselves in. And assign them to whatever thing they were doing. So. From my perspective, it seems functional. Um, if you want a presentation on it, I will try to line that up for your next meeting.
I mean, is the rest of the board comfortable with that? I would just like to know a little bit more about it before I voted on it.
Yeah, it'd be great.
That's fine. I have no problem with that. Okay, E five, purchase of kitchen equipment.
All right, so as most of you know, we do have a grant uh, that will. Um, pay for about ten thousand dollars worth of the cost of the equipment for the kitchen for the community center. Um, part of what we're trying to do. Is get the thing so we can actually have a functional food service license for the facility. Um, so and that implies a a series of things needed to be added to the building. So. Um, I am tomorrow meeting with a kitchen designer. Because I want to make sure that what I think will fit in there will actually fit in there and that we can get a design and layout. Um, but presuming we can, I would like to go ahead and purchase at least what we have. The grant money available and consideration of purchasing other things, we make that fairly functional. Um, you know, and we can keep the food service license for that. As opposed to running off a temp license, um, which has other restrictions. What are your questions?
What are you gonna purchase?
So I sent you uh, a list today. Um, everything I was looking at purchasing as well as the cut sheets on it. But basically a fridge and a freezer. Um, the required sinks. Um, that you have to have, which is essentially a three bay wash sink. A hand sink and switching out the prep sink to a stainless steel prep sink. A commercial microwave, a coffee brewer. Um, and. A work table and then consider actually putting in a dishwasher there um, at the same time. Um, and then with the layout to include exactly how the stove goes in as well as the hood. Um, you know, one of the things we've struggled with a little bit was how to get. Uh, you know, for years, the seniors have been saying they want to be able to do pancakes and pancake breakfast. Um, so we found a gas stove that has, so it's a six burner commercial stove, but it will take. A uh. You know, basically a griddle attachment that sits over for the warmers. That gives you a, you know, a a large griddle area so you can make pancakes or whatever else you want to fry on. Um, the other thing is, you know, looking at most of the senior centers, most senior centers. Seem to have a water and ice, a standalone water and ice dispenser. Um, they're really expensive. Um. You know, I'm, we originally planned on an under under counter ice maker. Um, and I think what I would like to do is go back to, so we've gone back and forth between. between buying the standalone ice and water dispenser or just an under counter ice maker. Um, and a separate water spigot for filling up. You know, uh, pitchers and stuff like that. I had a conversation with my tech plumbing about where we could install it and he's pretty confident we can put a tall pitcher filler right, uh, right next to our, uh, you know, our prep sink and that saves us about $2,000 because the, the, uh, under counter ice makers are a lot less expensive than the, the combo. So not a perfect solution, but probably a pretty good solution. And. So we went around looking at various different brands that we could get our hands on that we could actually look at. Um. You know, my suggestion is we use the local distributor, um, in East Hartford. You know, A, they're, the stuff they sell seems to have fairly good reviews. Um. You know, they have a lot of options in terms of what we can and you know, we have the ability to go look at it. So that's my preference. Um, but there are cheaper units certainly for the fridge and freezer. You know, we can use Websteront or Restaurant Depot. Um, for something that looks roughly the same. Um, they're not necessarily going to be stainless steel interior, but they are decidedly cheaper. Um, you know, we've looked at a couple of them. Their reviews are, you know, somewhat questionable. Um, and the one thing I know about the Paradise Equipment is they have their own service staff that are, are licensed to service what they sell. So that to me, the ability to know that you can get a compressor, you know, fixed if something happens. Um. You know, is probably worth the extra money. But, you know, I'm certainly willing to consider other options if, if you want me to. And I sent you the cut sheets on, on all the stuff we're looking for there.
I was just wondering if, um, depending on what time tomorrow, if I could come and see what the designer is talking about and planning. I've worked in commercial kitchens and I'd be really curious to see how it's all going to fit in there and what they're choosing.
Me too. Sure. I'll tell you when. Meeting scheduled for 10:30 tomorrow morning.
I'd like some more time to digest this. The time we got this information, I would like to take a look at it a little bit more in depth.
I'm assuming you're going to break down the, the total number to actually what you're going to incur. Because there's pieces that are on here that you said you were gonna remove. And adjust, so like the water, the water ice maker.
So the, the first question I have is, so the stuff for the ARPER grant, we really need to spend that by December 31st. So we can't wait a long time to make that decision. Um, beyond that 10,000, we can order now or order later. So we have more options when it comes to that. And I'm, I'm certainly not advocating for putting in the oven or the hood now. I think that's going to be a, a next year thing. That would be my guess. Um. You know, I gave you a series of options. Um, I think there's around five or $600 in small stuff that we technically have to purchase. Uh, we worked with that and that gave us a list of all the things we technically had to have. Um, you know, food service wise for the kitchen, um, most of those we'll just buy on Amazon. Cause they're cheaper for the little stuff. Um.
So then can you send us an email that tells us which pieces of this that you'd like to buy with the grant money that's available so we can approve it? You know, via email.
Okay. So you want just the stuff that we're gonna buy off the, the grant?
Isn't that the point? Because you have money, you have to spend it.
Mm-hmm.
And. I mean, I'm assuming that I, I would look at this and I go, okay. Are you gonna try to put the sinks in so that you can actually wash it? Are you gonna put one of the refrigerator and the freezer in? But. A lot of that information will be done tomorrow when you actually have the designer out to lay it out and you sit there with Ann and get some perspective on it all. Then come back to us and say, I have $5,800 and this is what I want to spend it on.
Okay. Fair enough.
Anybody have any problem with that?
Sounds good.
Okay. Uh, the leading edge change order.
Yep.
So, uh, you have any problems with that?
Yeah, personally, I think it's BS. Um, and I've told them multiple times, I don't think it's appropriate. But they're insisting we owe it. Um. I think we subtracted far more from that job, um, with public works labor than, you know, they had to make up in any overages. So I do not think it's appropriate. Um, but I don't think it's going away either. Um. So.
Did, did you put together a number for all the work that DPW did? So you can show them?
Nope, I did not.
Okay.
But I don't, I, you know, the, the real question in where I think he's wrong is that, you know, he's basically saying that a lot of this occurred because of errors, um, by the civil engineers, you know, and a little bit in the front was appropriate and I would agree with them. But from my perspective, the town public works had to completely regrade their work in the back. Because they didn't meet the engineer specs and, and their argument is that the engineer specs were right or were wrong. But when I look at the back and I look at the way it's graded now, Public Works was able to match what BSC Engineering proposed. But Leading Edge was not. You know, so from my perspective, they're wrong on that. You know, and we ended up spending an awful lot of time and effort correcting their work.
Okay, so.
So do I have an exact number for it? No, I don't.
And, and if you, you could, then you could go back and negotiate with Leading Edge and then come to us with a final resolution. So we could either approve it or reject it because you've got to go and do that. So that you get with Leading Edge and say, hey, listen, these are all the things that the Department of Public Works did that you're not taking into account. And here's how it offsets this number. And is this the last change order?
Oh no, I mean, they're threatening, you know, with, oh, well, if you don't, all these other things.
Eric, it does, you're good to do this.
Right. Yeah.
Well, good. So what I'm asking, what I'm asking, is this the expected last change order?
As far as I know.
Okay.
Yes.
So then, then go back, go back to, um, Leading Edge with the information that you've addressed that Department of Public Works effort and labor is not being taken into account and then sit there and negotiate that with them. And then bring the change order to us to approve at the next meeting if there is a change order. So, and understanding it's a negotiation and it may work and it may not work. So, but at least with the, the ammunition of understanding this is what Public Works put into this that we didn't get reimbursed for and they didn't have to do. Uh, that would be great. And they can't, they can't use the issue that it's the civil engineer's fault. I mean, I, I don't, I don't like dealing with people who do that and, but. You just gotta deal, you gotta, you gotta negotiate that outside of this meeting. We're not going to get anything done here tonight related to it.
The wall that they built in the back with the grading, associated grading was worth more than what they're asking. Just the wall.
That wall was not on the plans. So.
Yeah, but that's the only way, that's the only way to establish good drainage on that particular area.
Okay, the Scott, Jeff.
Not sure. I totally agree with that.
That's okay. Listen, just the three of you, because you're all, that's all area of expertise for each of you. Just sit there and you know, give Eric the ammunition to go back and negotiate with them so that we don't have to pay this money if at all possible. All right. Um, anybody have any other issues that are related to that? Okay, um. G, uh, so this is, uh, G, GG, GF, GF, a veil soccer contract for field uses, usage. It's under new business. I don't see the contract there. I'm expecting that we're not going to get a contract for them. They've moved. Coventry.
They've indicated that they've moved on and they think we're in breach of their contract and they're moving up.
Okay, we're in breach of their contract because they can't put lights up on the field.
Correct. But there's nothing in the contract that says that. So they're full crap. But the reality is we're not going to be able to make them pay for it anyway. So it's effectively a dead contract at this point.
Okay, we'll sit there and touch base with the town attorney on that later. Um, copier contract renewal?
So I put in your packet, uh, I looked at essentially three alternatives. The first is, so the copier that we, copiers that we have under contract are from a company called The Office Works. So if we just take those copiers out, put essentially the identical copier in using the state bid price in the same firm. It nets out to about $45 a month, less than what we're paying now with the same service costs. So that's one option. I also got a proposal from Rico because they're another company that covers a lot of towns in this area. Um, across the board, they were more expensive. Um, than, uh, the other guys, Office something, Office Works. Um, the other option I explored is what happens if we purchase our existing machines. Um, there, he, he wouldn't give me an exact buyout, but he said the buyout for those existing machines, because they would have to negotiate that with the lender. It's going to be somewhere between $4,000 and $4,500 for both the existing units. Um, they will guarantee a service contract for at least two more years. They said likely you'll get three or four years before they, they're, you know, there's still parts supply. They're not a machine that's made anymore, but since they were only sold five years ago. Um, they're legally required to have parts for at least seven years. And he said usually it's eight, uh, eight or so years before you start having parts availability. So if we bought them upfront, they do charge a higher service fee for units that are, you know, beyond a certain date. So our per copy charge will go up a little bit. It's not a significant amount. Um. You know, the bottom line is we break even 26 or 27 months from now. And then depending on how you, how long the units last, it's cash positive for the town to do that. Um, but you have an older machine that may or may not be less reliable. So those are really the three options. I would throw out the proposal for Rico. I don't see any advantage to that. Um, it doesn't give you anything you don't already have. And we're certainly getting good service from Office Works. So the question is simply, do you extend? Uh, do you sign a new, a contract for new machines off the state bid price? Or do you buy the machines outright? Um. You know? And go from there. Butts.
Uh, can you give us a one-page summary of the charges by quote? So that we can see it, you know, like the total, the cost by machine for each one of them and then the actual cost per page, like I'm, I'm thinking that the document for Office Works is on page 49?
Correct.
Okay.
So there's two things. There's a maintenance agreement. Their click charge for black only is 005.2 cents. And for cover color is 05. And that's what the service contract is built into the click charge essentially.
Okay, but where's the monthly cost?
Uh. I thought that proposal was in there.
No, that's, that's what I'm, I'm having trouble with. So I can sit there and see that the black cost for the Rico is point 0078, so two, two tenths of a penny or one hundredths of a penny higher and it's point 0615 cents per color. So a whole penny higher per color. So. I get that part of the equation. I don't get the monthly lease numbers. I mean, just knowing.
I'd have to go back. I thought that was actually in the packet. So I apologize for it not being. I think it nets out to about $175 a month for both copiers. And now it's like, it's 222, something like that. It's about $45 a month, less than our existing copiers.
Okay, but on the Rico one, you have a desktop. I'm assuming you're not going to use that in the senior center. I mean, so that, that's what I'm driving at. Like when you do a, a, something like this for us, you can have all the documentation behind it. So we can look at it, but it's really simple to put one-page piece of paper on this to say, here's the monthly expenses, here's the annual expenses, this is what we pay currently. And then here's potentially the, the savings or the price increase. So we can understand what we're dealing with. Um. To me, I just don't under, I mean, I, I understand these are leases, but it should always be, we should always try to get a lease to own contract, because if you can get a lease to own contract, you know, they don't charge you that $4,800, which is kind of ridiculous, which is a joke. Um. And then you can sit there and deal with some cost savings by just paying a higher per charge for each copy and each color copy. Uh. When do you, when do you need information? When do you need this information? When do you need this approved by?
I mean, our contract's been expired for a couple of months anyway. So if it's expired for a couple more, leasing company is getting a little antsy, but, but I'm sure they'll hold off another month or two.
So they're taking your lease payment though?
Of course.
Of course. Okay. Um. Let's find out if you can, just give us the one column that says current, one column that says what Rico is going to charge us for similar equipment. One column for what Office Works is recommending to charge us for similar equipment and we'll get it approved next cycle.
Fair enough.
Shouldn't be that hard to deal with this. The only question I have is, is lease to own or lease to deal with a buyout? That would be the only thing I would ask you to look at. Okay, anybody have any issues with that? Okay.
Issues. I, I like the leasing idea and that you always can get the maintenance with it, I think. Whereas when you own it, sometimes the maintenance, it's a problem unless you've got a company that's really good. I don't know.
Well, this company was gonna sit there and allow us to buy it out and give us maintenance for a minimum of two years. But then you have to sit there and do the analysis, is it worth the two years?
Is it worth it? Yeah. I don't know. That's a comparison.
We can do the math. Uh, if the information is just provided on a long piece of paper and you're not bouncing back and forth, you can do it. But. But Eric, uh, the avenue contract.
That's Carol. That's not me.
G H. Okay. So what do we, um, Carol, if you're on, are you on here? What are we attempting to do? What do we need to do for you?
Hi, yeah. Okay. And you're asking me questions. I'm sorry about the venue, um, chat.
Yeah, the avenue contract.
Yeah, sets the land records. So they have our land records. Uh, dog licensing, trade names, everything is done to that. They did have a six five dollar per month increase. Still providing all of the same services. Uh, Eric asked me to get a couple of quotes. I did contact. And another, I haven't heard back anything yet with the second call, but they are part of state contract.
So this is just a, a relicensing or a re-subscription fee for what we're currently utilizing.
Correct. It would be renewing for another five years with the same company.
All right. Okay. Um, and when does this expire?
It expired a couple of months ago.
Okay.
So we're just month to month right now at six fifty.
Okay, the same, the same, the same kind of information would be beneficial for this, which is what's our current costs and what's our? So you're telling us it's going up. How much?
Eighty five dollars. Currently it's six fifty a month for all of the same services. Contract is seven, I'm sorry, sixty five, seven fifty.
Okay, so currently in the town clerk budget, you have this set at six fifty a month, and it's going up to seven fifteen per month. Is the dog program included?
Yeah.
And what is the maintenance twenty twenty license for assessor?
So, um, basically I have two computers here, the admin computer and the public access. And then we have one other computer that we can, uh, put the in the, in town office program, access the land records.
And we have that in the assessor's office?
So currently it is on the assistance computer on her desktop.
Okay. All right, um, just as a question, have we planned for this in the current budget period to go up?
We did not, and I did ask them why they waited until after the start of our current fiscal year to give me the proposal. So they have new people and that's why I wasn't, and I wasn't paying attention to the expiration date.
Okay, so if we so we end up with potentially seven months times sixty five dollars. I'm assuming you have that flexibility somewhere in your budgets.
I do.
Okay. All right, Eric, are there any issues operationally that you see? I mean, it's something that's in the town clerk's office right now. So four hundred and fifty five dollars of additional subscription costs shouldn't impact the budget. Any issues? No, okay.
No, I mean, the question is, is that the best vendor? There's certainly plenty of other vendors or at least a couple of other vendors that provide the same service. Um, I, I, but I don't have a dog in the hunt. If you want to approve this right now, go for it and we'll move on.
Okay, so it's the existing vendor.
Correct.
Me, okay. And Carol, you were saying that you looked at other vendors, but they didn't, they didn't get back to you?
Yes, I did request a quote from cop. I haven't received anything back yet. And I have checked with other clerks who, uh, in, um, IQS, another one, and they're all right in that same ballpark. For monthly.
And who was the other one? Cop and who?
IQS.
Is that, is that the, the service that deals with the assessor's office and the tax, the tax bills?
I did not ask about that. I just asked other towns. Now, the towns that I asked, they do not have an additional computer on their system. They just have the computers that are located in their offices. Admin and public acts.
Well, the question is, does the assessor's office use it?
Again, it is on the assistant town clerk's computer. And yes, she does use it because if we have title searchers here, um, sometimes we have a couple in the office at the same time and we do have a second desktop.
Okay, so Carol, you would like to sit there and see Avenue's contract moved forward?
I would. They would be willing to do that. Um, we've had good luck with them. I haven't had any complaints from attorneys or title searchers. They all seem to like the system.
Anybody else have any questions for the town clerk? Okay. Anybody have any problem with the system and the, the additional costs, four hundred and fifty five dollars? Okay, anyone want to make a motion on that item? What was that one? No? All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize the well, let me go backwards. Carol, do we need a five year contract on this?
That is what they sent out. I can ask if they will shorten the contract, but every five years. The last one was a five year too.
The last one was five years as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, I'll make a motion that we authorize the town clerk to, to or the town administrator to sign the avenue contract for the land record management system.
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. There was a vendor permit in our package from Trinity Solar. Anyone have an issue with that? Eric, did that, uh, are you looking for a motion for us to authorize you to sign that?
Uh, well, if you want to issue a vendor permit, then you should do that. Um, that's a board of selectmen responsibility, not a town administrator responsibility. So if you want to give that person a vendor permit, make a motion to that effect. If you don't, don't.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to sign the the town of Andover vendor license for Trinity Solar LLC.
Okay.
I second.
Scott seconded that. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, twenty twenty five meeting dates. They are on page seventy eight. The only one that I had a problem with or I would like to adjust is I'd like to make the October meeting, October sixth. It's just, it's a Monday before the holiday. It's the first Monday in the month. Anybody have a problem with any of those dates?
So you want October to be October? Six, was that one again?
Or six.
October sixth. So Columbus Day is on the thirteenth, which is the second Monday. So as opposed to having our meeting on October fourteenth or whatever date, we just do it the week before.
Okay.
Anybody have any issues with any of the dates? I, I mean, July fourth is pushed out far enough to, to avoid the holiday. September is a week after Labor Day. So it was actually a fairly good cycle. And then November tenth is Monday, and that avoids the Veterans Day hos- uh, uh, holiday, which is Tuesday, the eleventh. Okay. So I'll make a motion to that, um, we approve the twenty twenty five proposed meeting dates. Uh, with Oc- the October meeting being scheduled for October sixth.
Second, Jeff.
Hey, Scott, any further discussion on the meeting dates? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Well, since we're talking, oh. I'll talk about meeting dates later. Meeting timing, uh, uh, item eleven, approval of the minute meetings for, uh, October seventh, twenty twenty four regular meeting and the, uh, uh, eleven B, the ten twenty one, twenty twenty, or special meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I'll second, uh, further discussion on the minute meetings. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Jeff, did you vote?
I'm going to abstain because I was out of one meeting.
Okay. Anne, did you vote?
Um, I just don't think some of it's very clear. Um, she makes it very cryptic and there's a few spots that I would have changed or said more probably, but I know the part about the tri board policy on the AES uh, capital projects. I spoke about that and this doesn't say who would quote, keep it, keep on the agenda and speak with the BOE chair and town attorney. Um, I guess maybe that was you, Jeff, but it didn't say. And then there was no mentions about my questions about the changes to it. I thought that maybe should have been in there.
Okay, so do you not want to vote in favor of it?
Well, could we just change it? Change the minutes? Add some of that in there?
Sure, you can make some recommendations to it. I'll, I'll sit there and rescind my motion. So.
Well, since they make the changes and then we approve it as changed, that's what we do when the planning and zoning, I know.
I understand that, but you'd have to sit there and outline the changes. So I don't mind with you outlining the changes, just if we can just get that done and you know, I don't even care if we approve those minutes and you want to hold this off to the next meeting so that you can identify the changes from the video and then write down what you want. Uh, we can get that to the this, to who, the minute taker and get them done. So I'm okay with that. So let's push this off till our next meeting. So Eric, we're going to approve those minutes after Anne uh, codifies her changes and we get them into the record.
Fair enough.
All right. Uh, to item twelve, treasurer's report. Anybody have any questions related to the documents that were provided us?
Oh. I had one under section nine, nine, zero, zero, transfers. It says transfers. I didn't know where the money was transferred to.
What page are you on? Start with that.
Oh, um, let's see. Find that again.
He has to be on page ninety eight.
It's page ninety eight. Yeah.
Okay, so what line?
Like nine, nine, zero, zero transfers. There's all those things, contingency, trans multi-use building, fire engine, fun tanker.
So all of those, all of those money go, all of those monies go to those funds, Anne. And they're sitting in the funds to be used. The only one that does not go to a fund is contingency. It's sitting there as a negative.
I see. That's not there yet.
Potentially be used.
So, um, then the, they let the, the tree removal fund has fifty thousand dollars in it. The building may fund, main fund has a hundred thousand in it.
Hmm, no, that just means that's how much money. That just means that's how much money was budgeted in this year to add into those.
Okay, so that was added in then?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, that is what was budgeted in this fiscal year to go into those capital funds.
Okay, so those, those funds all received that money when it was transferred. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
So just for your understanding, under five, nine, oh, two, oh, the AES capital fund, the Board of Finance, not the Board of Selectmen, transferred a hundred thousand dollars into that fund to be made available to the AES capital fund to spend on its potential capital needs.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else with any questions for the treasurer's report? Okay. So we're going to move on to, uh, the tax collector's report. Does anybody have any issues with tax collector's report? Eric, one thing that I'd like to do with the tax collector's report is, um, I'd like you to get the information on personal property taxes that are unpaid and do a better job. We, we need to get with the tax collector and make sure that we understand those taxes and also the taxes related to vehicles that are unpaid, because those are the taxes that she should be, um, really moving toward collecting as much as possible, because those are problematic when people either go bankrupt or, um, you know, are not paying us those bills, those. I know what you, I know what you've said in the past, that it's great when people don't pay their taxes. Um, real property, I have no problem with that, but on all the other items, I think we should sit there and make a more concerted effort on collection. And we don't have that much, to be really honest, but it is something that we should know about.
I mean, generally we get the motor vehicles for the majority of cases because the neck, you can't register a vehicle if you have unpaid taxes. So we may get them a year or two late, but we almost always collect that. The only ones we're not collecting on is the people that are cooking the books by continually moving around registration for vehicles among all their family members' names. And there are a few of those.
Those items are the ones in my head that we need to do a better job or focus on collecting those. I understand the real estate because you're not going to. I mean, I, I didn't notice a lot of liens on the delinquent report and I, eh, eh, well, actually there are some there, um, but I, I also chuckled that my wife was on the list. Which she shouldn't be, but I, I figure that's a bookkeeping issue. So. And it's kind of sad that there's one item and I, I make the top ten list or whatever it is. So, okay. Uh, excellent. It's always interesting to look through the list of people on the, on, on the property tax list. I love that. Yep. Um, okay, so, uh, anybody have any questions related to the tax collector's reports?
No, there's, there was something that I, I forgot to bring up when we were doing Eric's report that I went over when I was going to, going over Jay's monthly report. I noticed that you can have a meeting with distinctive. And I just wanted to mention to Eric now that there's another player in town with the tree removal service that has all the same equipment as distinctive and it's Carabeta. They, they took the state contract from distinctive now, so you should be getting prices. They're working with municipalities also. You should be getting prices. They're working with municipalities also.
Wow, well, since you're on that topic, Scott, are we still anticipating Eric working with Eversource on a program?
Uh, we did have a long meeting, um. With Eversource, um, we asked them to collaborate with us on. Uh, major tree removal on, uh, Burnet Brook Road. Um. The long and the short of it is. They're not willing to collaborate with us on that one. However, they did put all of Burnet Brook on their enhanced clearing list. So most of the things we were planning on doing and they marked a lot of stuff on both sides of the road. So I think we're gonna get them to pay for the majority of what needs to be done on the road as opposed to splitting it fifty-fifty. Um, so. And I think that's a political thing on their end, like. They couldn't collaborate with us, but they could accomplish the same thing by adding that to their enhanced. Tree trimming list, make it their responsibility. So overall, I'm quite pleased with that.
Okay. Right, um, anybody else, any other issues they want to bring up before we start moving? Well, we have to deal with the tax collector's refund request, so thirteen D, page one thirty-five of one sixty-three. There's two thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents of refund of excess payments. So. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Certificate of Corrections and one, two, three, four, five, six, Board of Assessment Appeals. Okay. Interesting. Okay, so, um, would someone like to make that motion?
You have it right in front of you, Jeff, right?
Yeah, I do. You know how much I like these, Scott.
You hate them.
I do. Uh, I make a motion to approve the tax refunds in a total of two thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
I just have one point to make. If you look at that list, you'll notice that there's two people that are on the B A A. That got reductions by the B A A.
Yes, and I'm sure they recused themselves and I'm sure you could sit there and go to the minutes and see that they did that.
I'm sure they did too.
Okay, so. Um, any further discussions on that? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Or nothing. Okay, so let's move on to uh, departmental reports. Does anyone have any questions related to any of the department reports? And I know Scott already asked a question about. Public Works. So. Um. The building department generated five thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy cents of a total permit. And now is that using the new program, Eric?
That is, it is in effect.
And when did it go into effect?
Uh, the day after the last meeting.
So about fifteen days of this would be new, potentially new permits. Okay, so let's sit there and see what happens in November. Okay, anybody else with any questions for any of these? Reports that were provided, so we had the building department. We had Public Works. We had the library. And we had the registrar of voters.
I will say on the registrar of voters. Um, you know, in early voting in general. Um, we did have a really high turnout of people who exercised their right to early voting. Um, I think it was something like thirty-eight percent of the registered voters voted. Um, early voting and we had the highest voter turnout we've had. I, I think that I knew. Um, so from an election standpoint, um, we had excellent participation by the citizens. Of the town of Andover.
Ninety-three percent, I, that's phenomenal. There's a, a reason why you want to do things at those. Uh, you got people to participate, which I think is phenomenal. Uh, I also do think that everyone that sees Wally and Linda Derrick needs to thank them for all their hard work. Because that was not easy, uh, two weeks of early voting and, uh. The effort they put forth, uh, needs to be applauded, so.
They, they got paid by a grant. Uh, Eric?
So.
I talked to, I talked to Wally about it. He said that they paid, the majority of it was paid through a grant.
Correct, um, so the first, when the, the state first implemented early voting. They set aside money for all the towns. They supplemented this general election with, I think, a two thousand dollar grant. So that paid for a big chunk of the salary, uh, for the early elections.
Nice.
So the question is, are they gonna continue with early voting? Are they going to allow their absentee ballot rules now to take? Effect. Because if not, they're not gonna give us another grant. They're gonna make us pay for all of the early voting requirements.
Understood, and I don't think we're going to know. I think. It sounds to me like legislatively and. You know, this could be wrong because this is just talking to, uh, Croggs lobbyist about how they think this is going. But what they think they're gonna do is just shrink and not have so many days of early voting. Um, but definitely keep some early voting along with, uh, the more permissive absentee balloting. Is what they think is going to happen, but whether the legislature does that or not, or the Secretary of State's office does that or not. Don't know.
Um, I still think it's, it's, uh. It's, uh, ninety-three percent is pretty good compared to what we've gotten in prior voting cycles, so.
Very good.
Okay, anybody?
We intended to run in the high, in the mid eighties for normal presidential cycles. But ninety-three percent is pretty awesome.
Yeah. I just, I was surprised at how cramped it was for the early voting. It just seemed like we should have given them a bigger room or something. I mean, there was nobody else waiting when I went, but it was just very, very cramped to get down there and. Sign in and then go and vote in the vaults and it was all sorts of. I thought we would have had them in the, uh, new community center or something like that. Or in the community room, one or the other.
Okay. Um, anybody else on any other issues? Okay, any correspondence, Eric, item fifteen?
Nope, none that I know of.
All right, public speak, uh, item seven, uh, sixteen, I'll start with, uh, Beata Gadamsky.
No, thank you, Jeff.
Okay, Bill Penn? Bill, if you can unmute, you want to talk? I'll come back to you if you want to, put your hand up, um, Stephen King?
Yeah, I wanted to, uh, mention, uh, something you discussed about, uh, Aspilin and Eversource. I spoke to the planner who's been on Burnet Brook. Uh, from a standpoint of safety, they're starting in about two weeks. They're taking a significant amount of trees down. And considering the amount of bicyclists, runners and walkers that we have, you might want to just make everybody, uh. Uh, aware of what's going on down here. Um, there's a lot of trees coming down.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Joanne Ebert?
Yep, just real quick, I wanted to wish you guys all luck as you continue your search for your new board member. I know you've had, as I've said before, good candidates come forward and a lot more that I've put their hat in the ring too. Um, it's great to see everybody wanting to give, you know, service to their town. And then just a quick point on. The community center director position that was spoken about tonight. I just hope truthfully that you keep her involved in all aspects of the building. I think it's important. That as, you know, the director, she's involved in, you know, all three of those big categories that Eric brought up. If we took one away, I just think that would be unfortunate. I think that everyone can work together. It was presented to the town that way last year when you were hiring for that new position. So again, I'm disappointed it's not full-time like it was supposed to be, but, um. That being said, I just think it's important that she has her hat in all three, um, uh. Items, thank you.
Uh, Linda Armstrong? Okay, move on from that, uh, Carol Lee?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, Alicia Lee? Okay, I'll come back to you, Lisa, Liz Lowketch?
I'm all set, thank you. Thank you all so much.
Hey, I'll come back to Alicia, Alicia, anything? Okay. Excuse me, Bill Penn, one more shot, Linda Armstrong, one more shot. Okay, um, item seventeen, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Excellent, who seconded that? Ann, you gonna second that?
I second it.
My Ann has seconded, all those in favor? Aye, thank you very much. Thanks a lot.